I did the early April meeting.
Hi Judy.
Hi, oh, you're here, hi, how are you?
Are you still standing?
Suggestion would be to make that like, here, or maybe a second email.
Barely.
Yeah.
How are you?
Bad, not bad.
He's like trying to get their act together, and it's still tripped me up.
He's behind it.
And, you know, my fault, but yeah.
A lot of people have been waiting since...
Hey Mark.
Six thirty.
Alright.
Oh, I can leave.
Yeah.
Hey everybody.
The chair.
It's gonna be quick.
Uh oh.
Want me to push over, Mark?
Actually, do we?
It's okay. It looks like it's at the back there.
Yeah.
Either way.
There's enough room.
I've got plenty here, if I need to.
If you can.
They put me here because the camera shines on my bald spot.
Oh, I see.
They put me on purpose.
Too fun.
Too fun. Is he from New York or is he from Jersey?
Good, how are you?
Good man.
Is there anyone even gonna sit here?
I figured he was self-sure.
And yeah, let's see if he's here.
Yeah, I'm out front. Yeah, just wasn't sure. I'll try and self-sure. Right now. Guy, I've been working with him about four years.
Plotting or plotting?
Who knows? A little bit of both. Yeah, it was a pretty rendering. It is. Sometimes you learn a lot.
You're sitting there, John?
Just sit there and listen.
Oh, seven o'clock.
I think your patrons will really appreciate that outdoor space. I was here quite a while. Yeah. I came early. I didn't know it was seven o'clock. Six thirty. I got here at like quarter past six.
Well, I got halfway here, and then I was like, I think it's a different time. I kept looking for you behind, walking behind me.
You arrived after me, didn't you?
Last ten years, because originally I feel the owner took it all.
I did, but I continued.
But you left earlier?
No, I left twice.
I see you left twice, okay. I see you asked it, thank you.
At a last awkward amount of, you got it?
We wanted to have all the big shows up, we were just gonna scrap all the development.
Nothing.
Mine's probably not in here.
Fifteen thousand, because we have enough. The issue is, is what a hell of a lot of parties.
So you get the big wooden one.
Since we have sewage out there.
Thanks.
We have that problem. We have five hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of sewage.
Is that you?
No.
Twenty-seven thousand gallons, David. You got five hundred, we got half a million gallons.
Good evening. It's seven oh three, and I will call our March ninth planning board meeting to order. And I'll begin with the role. Rebecca?
Oh, I'm here.
Phil?
Oi.
Neil?
Present.
Mike?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
Myself, I'm present, and alternates. Zach. Michael Bouchard.
Present.
And Peter Julia.
Present.
Okay, so you should... And of course, alternate, you're more than welcome to join the meeting, and as voting members tonight. Up next is a review of minutes from February sixteenth. Should all have a copy.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Or anyone need an extra moment to take a peek?
I read the minutes advanced.
Yeah, sorry. I had no corrections this night. Are we ready for vote? Oh, okay.
Don't wait for me. Is that, don't wait for me.
Okay. I just see Paige is flipping still, so I'm just gonna wait an extra moment. Peter, are you good? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Effortions? Okay, the minutes are approved. Are there any comments from the public not related to the business on the agenda? Okay. So up next, we have our consultation with Barrett Planning Group and Judy Barrett. And I'm looking around, I don't really see too many fresh faces, so I had a spiel ready to go to explain the whole thing, but I think we all are on the same page at this point. So, a few things I should mention though, where we are right now. The steering committee made of planning board members and other members, interested parties, are continuing our hard work to guide this process. We do have a website up and running on the town's website, and it's under projects, if you want to go there. And it's still in the process of being updated, but there's plenty of information there at this point, including important dates to remember. And I will also remember, remind everyone of course, that several of our original calendar dates from this year have been shifted, including this one tonight of course. And I have to keep track of those, including our next work session, which is going to be at the elementary school, and it's going to be a community meeting. That's early April, sixth. Yeah, so, tonight we're gonna welcome Judy Barrett from the Barrett Planning Group, and who has been working diligently this week, yesterday, today, and into tomorrow, with a very, very full schedule. And, so she is the owner, founding principal, and managing director of Barrett Planning, and I'm gonna read a little bit from her bio. She brings thirty-three years of planning and community development experience as a consultant and community economic development professional with state and local government. Judy has devoted her career to building the capacity of cities and towns to solve difficult public policy questions, and to develop effective leadership and advocacy skills. She is prepared to manage a variety of projects for public and private clients, including comprehensive and strategic plans, zoning revisions, housing studies, and more. And, obviously, a lot of this is very relevant to what we're doing here, and she brings a wealth of experience and expertise with herself and her firm. So, would you like to say a few words?
I need to update my bio, because it's thirty-five years now.
Oh, thirty-five years.
So, thank you for meeting, because I guess this is not a regular meeting night for you, and I appreciate your accommodating my schedule. It has been a full last couple of days, and it's been very helpful, and I think tomorrow will be as well. You know, until you actually start talking to people in a community, it's all data, and it's all past reports, and it's just sort of, you know, secondary sources of information or whatever, and it's when you start talking to people, it begins to put a lot of things together that perhaps were not all that clear. So I think one of the things that would be really helpful to me to know, and maybe we could even sort of go around and pick on everybody, so I make sure I can hear from all of you, because I don't know all of you, is what you're hoping as board members to get out of this project. Where do you want to be when we finish our work with you later this year? I'd like to start with that.
Yeah, it's a great place to start. And in fact, we should have introductions.
That's a good idea, yeah.
So while we're doing that, we can also do introductions at the same time.
That's fine.
And, wanna start on this end of the table, and kind of go around?
So, Mike Ahren, I've met Judy. I have a Christmas tree farm, and we sell to all parts of New England, and quite a bit in southern New England. I also am a landlord, and have four rental units, and very involved with the town for a number of years now, through the planning board, and through, again, the select board. And I guess what I'm looking to get out of this is, we can keep talking amongst ourselves and feel that we're experts on what the town needs, but we're too close to the situation sometimes, and it's nice to bring in someone who's viewed other towns and tell us what's glaringly missing. What could we do to be better? Some of us think that a lot of changes need to be made, some probably think, geez, we've done it pretty good, and a lot of communities think that we've done it pretty good. So, it's really excited to hear what the data says, and someone who's been in this for thirty-five years.
Neil?
I'm a lifelong resident of Plymouth, and I, I'd like to see guidance for the planning board to meet the needs of the town as it grows. This town is really a complex community, has an unusual diverse population, and it's, and it also has unique geographical features. And, I think that it's gonna be a challenge to find the right path forward to meet the needs of this community as it grows.
Okay. Right. Okay, I'll come back to that, go ahead.
My name's Phil Lamro. I'm not native, but I've been in New Hampshire for twenty years, and I grew up in a rural community in upstate New York that isn't too different from this. I feel like a lot of the community values here are similar to what I grew up with. I've worked in resident, I've worked in residential construction, I've worked in, I have a license as a real estate agent, although I'm not really working in that field now. I'm curious to have a professional who's not part of the community kind of provide an unbiased snapshot and opinion on kind of where we are as a community, and, you know, in the context of communities around us. I, I've been involved in planning for a few years, in this town and another town I lived in, but my interest in planning actually started when I lived in Oregon, which implemented statewide zoning in the seventies. That was incredibly effective, and I think without that, it's hard for, so I think every little town having its own zoning makes it really hard to have any kind of effective policy about encouraging density around urban centers, and, you know, lacking that, I'm not sure we're ever gonna get anywhere, but I think right now we have lots of little towns trying to prevent sprawl in their own town, and like, without a few towns saying, hey, we want some density, we have lots of jobs, like, it's really not gonna work. So, you know, I'm curious to see if that's ever gonna change, but that's my background.
Thank you.
Rebecca Hansen. I did not grow up in Plymouth, I grew up in Holderness.
You grew up there?
In Holderness, so just the next town over.
Yes, I know.
But, I think I'm still qualified to be here on the board. So, I've been on the board for about nine years, and a lot of my motivation to be here is to help maintain what makes Plymouth so special, what either draws us here or keeps us here, while also being able to accommodate for growth, and change, and things that are inevitable. I think through this process, I think what's particularly important for us is we hear about housing challenges across the state, but I think we don't really know what that means for Plymouth, so helping us navigate what's really, what's really happening here, how that fits within a larger context, but also what's, what makes us unique in this situation as well. And I also think a really important part for us is we're just a board of volunteers with one staff representative who has a hefty job. It's a challenge for us to connect with the community at large beyond just saying, hey, come to our meetings. So being able to connect with the community through the public engagement sessions, I think are a really important thing that will inform the housing process, but also our work in general.
John Crist. Just a, one of the things I, in this whole process, keep coming back to is what Rebecca was just mentioning, which is, it is difficult to really engage the broader public and do a deep dive, and really kind of talk to as many different types of people as possible. People who don't voluntarily just come to our planning board meetings, because they're so exciting. And, to be able to be, to have the funding and the help to actually do that process, and obviously you started it this week, we're gonna continue to dig deeper and wider, and talk to the community next month, and to be able to get that really broad feedback, and incorporate that into our process of planning in this town is one of my biggest goals. I also do want to learn more about how we can build in our strengths. We've got some very real strengths in this town, and it is sometimes hard to see them from an insider perspective. I am not as much of an insider as some other people on this board. I've been in Plymouth now for almost ten years, but still shy of that, and I think, I think there are certain strengths, even for myself, in kind of bringing an outside perspective, but to even have someone coming in to do this study is just, I think, really fantastic for us. Yeah, and seeing what our strengths are, for me, and as some of the board members know, like, I also like to see our strengths historically, as well as in the contemporary. I, I'm on a historical society as well here, and I often like to look back and see what some of its historical strengths are that we, that we could even tap into, in addition to our current ones. I could go on probably, I should probably drop there.
Mark Sturgeon, nice to meet you. I've been here actually even less time than John, only a little bit, about five years, and I guess I've been on the board for three years, so I really, Mr. Bolton suckered me on here really early on in my time in New Hampshire. But I think, you know, my hope is we can strengthen what Plymouth has. You know, I think we've done a really nice job, we have a great little downtown area, we also have rural areas, which I like, I kind of live out in the rural areas, which I appreciate. I also like the fact that we've tried to push kind of the larger commercial development out on Tenny Mountain, which I appreciate, keeping that there, and keeping our downtown kind of the same feel that it has. Sorry about that bud. So, you know, growth is necessary, we can't stay stagnant, but I do want to make sure that we kind of protect kind of those three distinct areas, downtown, commercial development, out on Tenny Mountain, and kind of that area, and then also keep the rural culture that I think brings people in, whether it's for hiking, swimming on the river, or whatever it might be, recreational skiing hopefully as well, for some of us, but, you know, just growing, but keeping those roots kind of where they are currently.
Okay, thank you.
How are you?
I am Michael. I'm kind of new to the area in the last nine years, I'm not native, and I'm up here as a developer. We have about nine hundred acres, the ski area, Tenny Mountain ski area, and we have plans of development, and the reason why I got involved with the board is so I could understand what the needs out of the town, what culture we're trying to protect, what type of technology we want to bring into the area, housing, and so on, so I'm very excited, obviously, with what you're doing, and that's good feedback for us, and we're working with the university very closely so we can match up the curriculum to whatever the job market is here, so we can have a nice balanced ecosystem.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pete Julia, I'm a professional civil engineer. I've been practicing over thirty years, and I've been a resident of the town here since, well, seventeen years or so. I'm an alternate on the board, and I've been involved a little more than six months now. My perspective is different from any of my associates on the board, on the board here. I'd like to see you absolutely shake up, tip over the apple cart. I'd like you to come up with some fresh thinking, I'd like you to, to play with the idea of live, work, play. I'd like you to sell us some lands that aren't even developed, that maybe infrastructure could expand to, and are prime for development, areas that would shatter the ceiling of the thirty-five foot height rule. Forget the culture, forget the historical, forget anything. My associate right beside me just presented a plan to the zoning board which I'm on two nights ago, that showed a whole new building and a whole different vision for Tenny Mountain. There's no reason why the town can't retain their charm downtown, but establish new identities in other areas to facilitate growth that makes sense. What I mean by that is workforce housing, or multifamily housing, or a technology park, or a business park, that's what I mean by upset the apple cart, tip it over, kick it, and present some fresh ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sue Wood, and I've been on the board for just a little over a year. I think I, I feel the same, a lot the way that Peter does. I'd like to see some changes. There's a lot of, the regulations and stuff I feel are old, society has changed over the years, and it just doesn't feel like the growth, we have not grown with that, we've not changed with the changes. I really would like to see more. Downtown is very restricted, obviously, and it's a beautiful, beautiful area, but Tenny Mountain Highway, that whole area, there are so many areas that could still be developed. Housing, we need the, the industry to get here in order for the housing to match it. So I just feel, I feel in order to get growth, we really need someone like yourself, that's not close to everything, and that can look at everything, and just give us a better outlook on what you see.
So that gives me some things to follow up on, but start with picking on what you said about the needs of the community, and I'm wondering if you could maybe help me understand how you see those needs. That's a lot of what the discussion has been with the interviews over the last two days.
See the community?
The needs of the community?
Well, we have conflicting needs. We have the university, which is a great asset to our community, but it, the population of the university isn't a really great fit with the residential district of the town. And, so we, we have to try to work to accommodate both, and I, you know, I feel that the citizens of Plymouth need to be able to maintain their homes financially by keeping the tax rate at a reasonable level. And, we also have a large rural area in the community, which has its own distinct needs. So, we have to balance all these different needs, but at the same time, we're in the crosshairs of growth. There's absolutely no disputing the fact that this is a very desirable place to live. Our community is known as an environmentally conscious community, and people value that, and that is going to put a lot of pressure on the environmental protection in our town. So, we have to keep our tax base up, and that makes it so that the working people in the community can afford to stay here, and I think we have to take that into consideration.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment on the needs here? Which has been a lot of what the interviews have been about, but they go in a lot of other directions as well, so I'm kind of wondering from the board's perspective, how you see the needs here, and how housing currently fits into those.
One thing that's a challenge for Plymouth is, we're housing families, but there's no second homes in Plymouth. We don't have a lake, we don't have a lot of amenities that some communities have, and it puts a real burden on the infrastructure to pay for everything this size town would need. And it, the property taxes always become the focal point that everybody focuses on, which would make any changes difficult. And the more that we bring in subsidized housing, which Plymouth has its share, it can put it more of a burden on trying to provide single-family homes, because the land, we're not making more land, and, so I worry about the property taxes and how that limits where Plymouth can go in change into. And this just hasn't been an easy fix for Plymouth, and it's been getting harder and harder over the last ten years. It's not a lack of, it's not, it's not an overabundance of spending really, it's more of a lack of income.
I can add. I think one of the things that we would benefit greatly from is, there are lots of people who are either in town or want to be in town, starting with those in town first, those who are in town whose families have moved out, their kids and such, and often find themselves moving out of town to find townhouses and condos and stuff like that, because they really can't find a place that meets those needs within town easily, especially within a walkable, walkable community like our downtown. So there's that, and there's also younger people, younger professionals, younger college faculty, who might want to live close to the university, in a walkable neighborhood, who might not want to own an entire single-family house. And, that sort of need, which I think there is, and I've certainly, on the older end, I've definitely seen it, on the younger end, I've definitely heard from people who are, like fellow faculty at PSU for example, who are looking for a place and don't want an entire house. And it's really difficult, because there's student rentals, and then there's, you know, and those individuals have a really hard time, I think, finding a place, especially a walkable place in our community, and I think that's an important thing that we could be providing better.
If I can jump in. So, I think that, Mike touched on the affordability issue and the tax rate, and I think two of the things that nobody's really addressed yet that I think frame that issue are that we have... we have at least three substantial institutions that are tax exempt in town, with the college, the Spear Hospital, and then mid-state health center tends to be expanding their business services and occasionally pulling new properties off the tax rolls. The other thing is that, if you read the, the master plan, I think there's a, 75% of the acreage is in current use. So those two things leave a significant tax burden on the 25% of acreage and homes that is in, you know, basically, you know, full boat tax rate. And then I guess the other thing, you know, affordability, you know, I think when we look at housing affordability, we have two things. We have people's income and cost of homes, and you know, we see cost of homes going up, and I think, you know, if you look nationwide, you know, real wages have been decreasing from, since the 70s. You know, the real earning power of people has been on a downward track for a long time, and I think we are living that experience, that, you know, young families aren't making enough money to be able to afford homes. And, you know, how we choose to deal with that, we have an opportunity, like, but it's not going to look like the solutions of the past. You know, I do think there's an opportunity for developments like, so I didn't realize until recently that the Blueberry Hill Development, like, that was supposed to be the first phase, that we're supposed to be like another 75% on top of what's there, and the developer that started that died, and they had to get somebody in to finish the units that were started, but apparently that was, like, that seems to work. Like, those, those units are in high demand, they have a lot of amenities for people who don't want standalone, single-family homes, you know, some, I think, I think that model would work well in this community for a certain segment. I think there's probably a need for more affordable multifamily housing for a segment of the population, too. And I'm not saying, you know, special needs or income qualified, but just workforce housing, you know, housing for people that are kind of in the middle part of the income range in the community. I would say that if we, I'd be curious to know how much of the housing we currently have meets the definition of affordable.
Yeah, that's probably what we're trying to get a handle on, too.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm curious, because I think the RSA that deals with that says that if a town doesn't have a certain percentage of its housing that meets the affordable definition, they have to accept.
Yeah, it's similar to a law that exists in Massachusetts.
Right, but at the same time, I wouldn't be surprised if it kind of meet that, although housing prices in the past two or three years have upended that boat, too.
I can also take you back a little bit.
I'm done.
Speaking of affordability, but also tax rates and utility rates like water and all that kind of things, obviously there's a lot of issues that go into that, including the nonprofits and other issues, but density. The more you can encourage density, I don't, I'm not even sure what spacer is for infill or anything like that, but the more we can encourage that sort of development, rather than sprawling further and further out into the ag zone, I mean, it protects the ag zone to not sprawl further onto the ag zone, but it also reduces the need for increasing utilities, plowing, and all that other kind of extended costs that go into maintaining all that infrastructure. So what we can do to also encourage density in terms of like culture and walkability, but also in our downtown, but also in terms of just like saving money.
Yeah. Anybody else want to comment on this?
I think just in regards to density, because for some reason Frank Miller's not here tonight, but I think if he was, he would talk about parking in the downtown area and how it relates to housing. And if we're going to have more density downtown, how are we going to do that? We're going to need more parking.
And it wouldn't just be Frank, it's like everyone.
Everyone, yes. So that's, I think, a big issue. So I think that's something to consider.
That was definitely, pardon me?
The third rail.
That was the theme of yesterday's interviews. Lots of talk about parking. So you mentioned about the strengths of the community, and I'm wondering, what do you guys think are your strengths here? My experience in planning is when communities start to implement whatever plan it is that they've just completed, whether it's a master plan or a housing plan or whatever, you've got to build on your strengths. That's really where you start, to then get at, how do you address the things that are more difficult? And I'm wondering what you think your strengths are as a town?
Well, I mentioned strengths, and, I mean, certainly I think our, the village commercial area, the downtown, is a, is definitely a strength, it's a really vibrant place, people come there for all the different shops and everything we have to offer, and the culture in the university and the performances and all this sort of stuff that happens there. And I mentioned the historical element. I mean, for me, I look at the history not to say we shouldn't do anything radical or like expand, or challenge the 35-foot rule. If you look at the history of that downtown, it used to be taller and denser, and and then we hit a roadblock, like the train stopped coming, and then Route 93 bypassed us, and other changes happened, and fires happened, and we built smaller, and we're not as dense and tall, and there used to be buildings that were more than 35 feet. Some of them burned, D and M is still there, and it is part of our historical character, in fact. And I don't know exactly what that would mean going forward, but I, I appreciate, one of the things I appreciate about looking backward is to see just how vibrant and dense it was at some point. And there are ways that we already kind of recapturing some of that, and I'd like to see us do more.
I would, I would say the other thing, I agree that the culture of having a college town and the youth and the, there's more restaurants and entertainment options in a small town than you get in another community, but our proximity to the White Mountains is important, too. I really do think that the recreation amenities that surround this community and continue to be developed, you know, if you look at, you know, the cross-country ski trails and mountain bike trails that are, that are still being developed in the area, I think there's a, you know, that with the, you know, the local rock climbing, I mean, there are a lot of really good recreation activities that draw people to the area. I think we have enough restaurants, you know, we're, there's a proposal for another hotel, which we'll hope, but I, you know, I do think we have a unique mix of amenities for a younger population that is, draws people to the area, I really do. And I don't, I don't disagree that there's an opportunity for more development. You know, I think what Littleton has done with their commercial, they kind of had like a industrial, commercial area development, I think that would be great in town, I think we have the room for it. I think if Frank were here, he'd point out that the whole area to the south of Tenny Mountain Highway was zoned that way. You know, he pointed, he brought that up to me years ago, that, you know, originally, there was originally a plan for another road to kind of cut back behind all those stores and kind of develop that area. I think there's a lot of potential there.
I got something. The town of Plymouth started out with a royal charter in 1763, and the cannon on the front lawn was captured at the Battle of Bennington from the British by soldiers from Plymouth and brought back. And we didn't have zoning in this town, well, before I get to that, the Coas Road, which was an important road for transporting goods and materials, went through Plymouth and went up the Baker Valley, and the Dartmouth College Road went through Plymouth. And the town grew as a junction, and, you know, the river, and then in 18, well, before 1860, the railroad made it to Plymouth. And from 1860, the railroad went from Plymouth to Woodsville, which connected it to the Connecticut Valley, and that made a huge difference. It was like having an interstate highway. But we didn't have any zoning in this town until something like 1956, and then it wasn't much. And so the town has very slowly adopted rules for, you know, building and housing and commercial development. And now we have a town administration which is very transparent and very welcoming to the public, and I think that that is a key factor in, in developing the future of the town.
I would say a big strength of the shop owners downtown. It's huge to have that for a community to kind of rally around, and it really makes the community welcoming when you get to talk to the storefront owners, and they look after, you know, they know the kids, they know the people, and it's really important, and I think an opportunity is Tenny Mountain, and another opportunity is being right on 93 rather than being 20 minutes off the interstate, so.
On the flip side, I would also add, it's nice to be, like, we both live very close to downtown, and at the same time, without going very far, I can go to a local farm and get produce, I can go to someone else and get fresh milk and eggs, and I can do all of that, like, within Plymouth, and still have a nice kind of vibrant downtown. And to have both of these within reach, I think is really nice.
I do feel like the downtown area, too, is the connection between town and gown. I think without that, I think if that was not as vibrant as it is, I do think that it would be a little more stressed, the relationship between the two, but really downtown is very, very important to keep that all together.
Okay. What has been your experience with plan implementation? So you finished a master plan a few years ago, and you've done other work here, I'm just wondering, from the planning board's perspective, or select board, or, you know, anybody who's had other roles in the community, what has implementation been like for you? And what is your role in it? I mean, is the board really focusing for implementation purposes on the zoning ordinance? Do you get involved in other aspects of implementation, say capital planning or things like that?
We did, I mean, we did, we did start, I mean, last year was the first year that we did a CIP, after a number of years of not having one, so there is that experience, our staff was great.
Did you guys get involved with that?
Phil was heading that up, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, it was a subcommittee of this board, so I was involved in that, but it was, it was really, I was tremendously impressed with the community involvement and the, honestly, the involvement of the department heads made it, the format worked really well. But I mean, I'm not sure that I've been on the board long enough to feel like I've had an opportunity to look at much of the implementation, I mean.
Well, this is the thing, you changed the zoning ordinance, and of course, we all know, I think, like, it's not like everything just changes overnight all of a sudden.
Right.
It's a very long kind of glacial process of changing the ordinance, and then slowly things kind of get shaped in the very long term. Capital improvement's going to have a more immediate impact, or applying for state funds for a particular project, like an intersection or something.
I'll say that there was an attempt at implementation a couple of years ago, and I think it was probably not, there was probably not enough outreach to make some changes to zoning, and it raised a lot of interest in town.
You want to talk about that a little more?
No, I mean, I would say that the current makeup of this board is a result of that process. I would say there were, it got some people's attention that probably didn't realize that, you know, there were things, there were, you know, discussions happening. I think there was a subcommittee of board members at the time who, you know, took the master plan and, and, you know, worked on implementation, but, you know, I'm not sure it was, I'm not sure there was enough outreach to get enough community involvement to get buy-in there. If that's a good summary, I'm going to have somebody else jump in, if anybody wants to share another experience.
I think implementing a master plan is, there's some things that just happen really organically, and some of the stuff we've gone through, and we haven't done this this year, but we, past years, we've kind of gone through stuff and just checked things off the list. I think, so some things have happened fairly easily, some things have crashed and burned, and, you know, and I say that with no judgment at all, so I think, I think it's easy to make a master plan and just, you know, put it on the shelf, and then we'll, we'll look at it in 10 years when it's time to redo it. But I think some of the stuff that we have gotten to, the site plan regs, that was something that needed to get done, but obviously was something in the master plan. I know there's a economic development committee that's happened, so, you know, things are happening, it's just sometimes with this, too, it's like, who's in charge, and who's in charge of, you know, we're a board of volunteers with one staff person, so whose job is it to go through and be like, hey, I'm trying to find someone, it's not us?
June is with us, she's online.
Oh, June's here.
Hi, June.
Um, sorry, I didn't mean, yes, two staff people. But, you know, who's going to tell the highway department that it's their job to make sure we're, we're continuing to develop our role as a regional commercial center? So trying to connect with who's tapped to do certain things, I think, I think it's just a challenge, so.
Yeah, Mike?
With, in New Hampshire, we found out 17, or actually, maybe it's now 18 years ago, that when they tried to make major changes to the master plan, they did it too much detail. And for New Hampshire, a master plan by design in the RSAs is more of a guide, and I agree 100% with Rebecca, that it's kind of happens organically, where we, where if there's a need, it becomes blaring and we try and tackle it. I've been involved with the master plan now, it seems like since the 19, late 80s, and through the Yettons and my family, and it seems like there's a lot of good intentions for planning, but it doesn't always have the people that can't make those meetings throughout the process. It's not always good for them, so we've got to have, I don't forget who said it, we've got to work on outreach more to make sure that something that we come up with is not dead on arrival.
One of the things, one of the things I love to see come out of this, and that's on us more than on you, but we're doing all this outreach right now, and it's a major push, similar to a master plan push for outreach, or maybe even more in some ways, to actually keep that connection alive, which I know is really, really difficult. But to the extent that we can at least maintain some of that connection going forward, it's difficult, and I think it's important.
Does your community do things like periodic surveys, just to sort of get the pulse of the town?
We did one for the master plan.
Yeah. Sometimes I know we'll do them a little more frequently than that.
Regularly.
Just to throw some questions out and see who's out there and who's thinking about things. I'm just wondering what mechanisms you have to connect with the public here beyond a planning board meeting?
Coffee at Beeterman's. Coffee at Beeterman's. That's, that's what we do.
Word travels fast.
Word travels fast.
I'm hoping with some, you know, administrative changes within the town, there can be a little more leadership to get the word out a little more. I think that, I do think the town of Plymouth has been lagging a little bit in how we connect with people. You know, I see some towns that have an email distribution list for all minutes, agendas for public.
You can sign up for.
Yeah, you can sign up for, so you're getting that information. You know, the way we do it in Plymouth is the way we're statutorily required to do it, but times have changed, and not everyone's looking at bulletin boards or the papers and things like that, so, so I think, I think there is a disconnect, something that's beyond this board, what we can deal with, and I think it'd be great to be able to share information, to get, to encourage people to come more by just spreading the information that already exists.
Our meetings are broadcast on PPTV Live, and then you can get them on YouTube.
Yeah, on demand.
So it's available to people that are interested, if they have an interest.
And people do watch. I occasionally have someone like walk up to me like, hey, actually.
Yeah, I'm amazed at how many people see me, like, oh, I've been watching you at home. What? People watch these things? It works.
Yeah, I'm on the zoning board of appeals in my own town, and I'm sometimes shocked when people will send me an email or send me a note on Facebook or something and say, I saw you last night.
Yeah, it's interesting.
You know. So I've heard different thoughts over the last couple of days about housing affordability. So I've heard different thoughts over the last couple of days about housing affordability. And I'm wondering if you guys can maybe share with me what you think affordable housing is. I'm not trying to set you up, I'm really trying to understand how people think about this concept. Cause I've heard different things, so what's affordable housing to you?
Well, um, one of our biggest problems is that, uh, in the village, uh, there are so many off-campus units which are priced much higher than what a family could afford. So it's difficult to find an affordable apartment in Plymouth because of all the off-campus housing. If the university continues to pull students back onto campus, that will take pressure off there.
And some of them are starting to fill back up with families again slowly, some of the off-campus housing.
Talk about an investment though.
Yeah.
Taking a home, taking a home that's been used for, you know, college apartments and turning it into something that's desirable for a family. It's almost like knock it down and start over.
Well, ten years ago when I moved here, I was looking for a place. And I was gonna just rent for a year or something while I found something more permanent. And I was like, and this is the rental market? Like, like my God, I was living in Massachusetts previously, like I, I could afford to live in Massachusetts more easily. And. And I ended up buying a house like really fast, cause like that was the cost-effective thing to do. Renting was not the cost-effective solution. And that was really kind of eye-opening.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there are a lot of the, um, student rentals that were single, always single-family homes, not the ones that were converted to multifamily homes. So the ones that were single-family homes, I've noticed that a lot in the, in the single-family residential zone that, whereas we used to have a lot of college rentals on our street and that are a few, and that's just really, that's really come back and has changed quite a bit.
Changing back to single-family?
I mean, they've always been single-family, but they're not, they're not getting rented to college students anymore. I think the, in the multifamily residential, that's a, that's a bigger, that's a bigger change just because there have been so many houses that have been converted to have apartments and things like that, so.
And these neighborhoods too that have a lot of these college houses that used to be single-family homes, larger ones, um, they've been converted. The parking is on the front lawn, the porches are gone, it's a different, if it's, it's a whole different feel. And, uh, people are not wanting, they're saying it's an awkward position to be in because they're, they're raising their family, but they feel like they're still in the middle of the college. The businesses are right there and then in back of them may be residential stuff, so it's an awkward feeling for people to be living in that area.
Actually, I've heard a little bit of that this afternoon from someone I spoke with. Any else have a thought about affordability here? Because I, I have a follow-up.
That was the question. I think, um, going through this housing committee and going through these, um, seminars that we've been seeing. I've never heard so many definitions coming from people about affordable housing. There's so many and I, I don't know what the definition is. For me, affordable housing is like we've described, if you make eighty thousand dollars a year, you're gonna buy something that's gonna accommodate what you can afford. But that's, I don't even dare to give a definition on that, there's so many out there.
We, we talked about this on the committee, in fact, because we have to engage with the public. And there's like a legal definition of affordable housing and then there's what the public thinks is affordable housing. And how do you kind of navigate that minefield?
Yeah, it is a minefield.
Part of the legal, part of the legal part of it is, is, you know, based on what banks are willing to consider in preapproving you for a mortgage and in terms of, you know, what fraction of your income can go towards housing costs and like. There, there's fun, you know, it's not just a, a legal definition, I mean, it's based on reality of what people can borrow. And it, it, it hits hard. You know, my, my experience, kind of being aware of the real estate market over the past year or two is that, um, I, I think there was a recent statistic that came out that said thirty, you know, thirty-five percent of home sales in the past year in the state of New Hampshire were cash. I think there's some towns that were as high as forty, there's one town where over fifty percent of sales in that town were, were cash. And at significantly higher values than we're used to seeing in the New Hampshire marketplace. You know, typically if people are moving out of suburban Boston and selling a home that they've been in for years, they've got money available, they're trying to buy something in the Hampshire market. It's, seems cheap to them, but you know, it's way more expensive than what we're used to. So the, the housing market here has changed. If, you know, if you go on Zillow and look at your own home value, it, it's probably significantly higher than you think it should be, but it's probably not high enough. In reality, like every Realtor I've talked to said, no, Zillow's still low. And, and, and like that was what I was, yeah, I mean, that was what I was looking at, like when I was looking at, when I was doing comps for people last year, like I was, I was making, you know, I would look, I would do a comp based on what I thought and I would look at Zillow and it was usually lower and then like, we'd put it out to sale and we'd get twelve cash offers that weekend at a higher rate. So it's not that far, it's not as, it's, it's, Zillow's not as high as it should be.
Looking at the housing study from twenty years ago was a little shocking for me and I can't remember if it was the, it was the, it was either a percentage or the number of homes that were assessed at over two hundred thousand. It was either two percent or it was two, but either way, it's shocking. And just thinking about, you know, where minimum wage has gone in the past, we haven't seen.
It hasn't gone up in the time?
Yeah, so, or maybe it did once in like two thousand seven. Maybe longer, but anyway, it's, I mean, I think that that, that's pretty striking, the changing in, the change in home values. And, you know, it's not just about purchasing homes, it's about having a, a rental market that can support, um, non-students as well. And I was in a similar situation to John where fifteen years ago, it was way cheaper for me to buy my, a house than it was for me to rent one. And, you know, for whatever that means, but, um, but having a, a strong rental or, you know, affordable rental market too just opens up to people who might want to move to town or can't afford, you know, can't afford the cost barrier of homeownership, so.
Just to add to what Phil was like, affordable for who? Affordable for people moving from Massachusetts because they want to work remotely now, because that's becoming more and more of a possibility. And New Hampshire is currently rolling out more and more high-quality internet. And rolling out high-quality internet across New Hampshire is really important, I think, to the future of the housing market. As more and more people from out of state for whom our houses are very affordable, um, make cash offers on houses.
So different people I spoke with over the last couple of days have talked about how hard it is to find a rental unit here. Outside the sort of college market, students are renting. And also talked about how a house will go on the market and there's like immediately offers. So today we were driving around town and I didn't see, Joseph, I'm not sure, maybe there was one.
Real estate signs.
Sale signs anymore, right? So, I mean, I know this isn't the optimum time of year perhaps for somebody to be putting a house on the market, but there was like none.
Uh, we're, we're getting into when it will start though.
Yeah, and that may, that may be the case, but I guess what, what I couldn't help but think about was if there's so much demand for a home, for rent, why isn't there more development happening here? Cause usually what I see in other places I've worked is when the demand is up and the supply is down, there's development happening somewhere to sort of meet that need. And I'm wondering why there isn't more here and I'm, maybe you can help me understand.
There's some, but it's still like, I mean, new construction, I mean, you're looking at six or hun- six or seven hundred thousand for new, new construction. I mean, when you, when you look at new construction, it's not affordable for most people that are, um, I mean, there is new construction. It's generally not in this, like, you know, if you look in Camden, Thornton, I mean, there's, there's new construction around.
There's stuff on horizon of people try- trying to build right now, larger subdivisions and such.
It's hard to find contractors, it's hard to find laborers to, to work in the skilled trades.
The inventory's still out of balance too.
The what?
The inventory, construction inventory.
Oh, with building materials?
Building materials all around, especially the larger scales, steels.
I mean, we have been told that, um, you know, we have a maximum six-unit multifamily, um, limit in our zoning ordinance. And we've been told that if that's, it might not be a profitable project unless there's the opportunity to build bigger units.
I'm sure that's true. Speaking of upsetting the apple cart, I might as well tell you, that's not economic.
And I can also tell you there's a lot of pushback against changing that.
I'm sure there probably is, but you want an honest answer, that's very difficult to do without subsidy. Which is what people don't want, so, you know, you gotta decide what you want.
Well, this is also where public outreach comes into play. Cause it's like what happens next week at our town meeting that actually, at our Tuesday vote and our Wednesday meeting that actually decides this sort of thing.
So do you have zoning on the warrant for a town meeting this year?
We do.
Small, a few small changes. Nothing huge, right?
We have.
Mostly administrative changes.
We have some administrative changes, we have the chickens in single-family residential.
All the chickens.
And then we have two that are more significant, I would say. One is currently we measure the height of our buildings by the average height of the building. Which if you're building on a slope.
Oh yeah, this is a common issue.
It's complicated, so one of the changes is on Main Street to measure thirty-five feet off of Main rather than off of the average. So if you're building on a big slope and like your building will be one story tall and so actually to measure it off of Main. The other change.
Measure it how far from the building?
Well, no, third, we're talking about height.
I understand that, but you're measuring height from something, how far from the building? Is it right at the foundation?
Off, off of Main Street, yeah.
But is it right, are you measuring that from the foundation or some number of feet back? From the front of the building?
From the front foundation, yeah.
Okay.
And the other changes have to do with setbacks. If you look through our residential neighborhoods, there's a lot of houses that are less than thirty feet setback and our current minimum setback is thirty feet. And so we just.
In all districts?
Single family.
Single, in, in the resident, residential, I think it's single and multifamily. And so we decided to propose that we keep the thirty feet, we talked about actually just eliminating the thirty feet, but to keep the thirty feet but allow fifteen by special exception, which also, which brings a whole lot of properties into compliance with the current zoning. And it allows for any new construction to not be thirty feet back without a variance. And we also changed the setbacks on, on, in the village commercial, or we didn't change, we proposed it, we'll find out next week. In the village commercial, which are currently at a minimum of, is it fifteen?
But we also added, we also added a maximum.
So we proposed there to reduce, reduce the minimum setback to zero.
Right.
And put a maximum setback of ten.
Right.
To, so all the village commercials.
So you don't think we're crazy?
No, no, this all makes sense to me, I've done that kind of zoning, so.
And it, it doesn't affect much in the kind of core unless something got burned down and had to be rebuilt or something. But as you go more further south on Main Street, there's a whole lot of development potentially down there or buildings that currently with big parking lots in front of them and large curb cuts and all this sort of thing that, um, over time might come more into a, more kind of, into the character of the rest of Main Street.
So the setback rule, are you saying if someone, um, needed for whatever reason or wanted relief from that, they have to get, is it a variance or is it?
Currently it requires a variance.
It would be a variance, yeah, and we, and, and in its place, we have a special exception.
Who decides a special exception here?
Still the ZB.
ZBA.
So what about an average setback? Sometimes communities.
We talked about, we talked about that, um, we did talk about that.
We, we have that for.
Sometimes communities allow that, you know, you're just the average of the setbacks of surrounding properties and then nobody has to go to the ZBA.
I think one of the reasons we decided against that, I mean, it makes sense in a lot of areas. There are also some places where the average setback is larger that because of steep slopes and such, you might just want to actually push to a smaller setback as well, um, and to allow that by special exception as well.
Yeah. I can see that.
Yeah, so we, we did toy with the idea of doing the average and ultimately we decided on a number and a special exception.
Okay.
We did discuss a lot of different things, but we decided with this housing grant that we would kind of sort of put some of them on hold until we found out what the recommendations might be.
Okay, that's, and I'm just trying to understand how you get to some of the decisions that you, that you make, but I can understand that.
There's an awful lot of things that need to be changed, but it's just, we just had a lot of balls in the air and figured we'd wait until.
Well, and it's the fact, and I'm, I'm sure you've heard all about this already, even from us tonight. Certain changes to zoning that might be beneficial, even broadly agreed upon as beneficial, might trigger parking issues or something else that immediately come into discussion and they say, well, I like this idea, but you have to solve this problem first. And this is a very common kind of.
Awful lot about parking.
Yeah. And this conversation happens again and again and again, as you've seen already.
Yeah, seems to be.
I'm, I'm curious if there's a solution for that, I mean, part of their parking issue is that we don't allow on-street parking to facilitate snow removal, right? But it's a solution.
I think part of it's snow removal and part of it is, um, college, college parking. So, cause it's June first to September first, so.
Yeah, not October.
On-street parking is fairly common in environments like college town. Probably better than having it in people's front yards, but that's just another conversation, I guess, for another time. So what other kind of, I'm curious, when you mentioned that maybe you want to put some things on hold for this study and I'm wondering what other things you've thought about in terms of amendments to the zoning ordinance that you think might address certain needs or desires or, or issues in the master plan? What other kind of zoning ordinance ideas?
The unit number has come up a number of times.
What has?
The unit number, the maximum of six units. And it gets contentious and it's, at this point, this year we didn't even really bring it up because we thought maybe we would do the housing study and see, see what came out of that. But the last few years we have discussed it several times and.
What's the nature of the opposition?
An increase in students at the, in the public school, I mean, it's largely, I mean, I'd say there's a couple of things, tax-related, that it's gonna increase our taxes. It's going to, the other concern, um, changing the character of the town, um, just by the nature of the, the size of the structures, I think would be the.
If I can share one thing on, on the student issue, um, if our state adequately funded education, the number of students, no, no, seriously. This is, they're, they're supposed to fund a hundred percent of the incremental cost of educating special education and they do not. So if we have more students that need special education, it impacts our community, it should not. A hundred percent of that should be from the state. We should, we should be covering, we should be covering the, the normal cost of every student and any additional special ed costs should be borne by the state. So like, it wouldn't matter if we had a hundred families move into the community with special needs students. Our school could handle it, but the way that it's currently funded, we would be footing the bill for the, for the special education needs, which are substantial. Like significant, like if you look at the special ed line items in the school budget, it's almost as much as the regular education for a small number of students. And, and most of that should be coming from the state, so reach out to your legislators, reach out to your senators, reach out to the governor, talk to him. It shouldn't be that way, but, you know, that is a pervasive issue in the state.
I think more opposition to more units than six would be the, the extra pressure when you can allow more than six developers are more apt to buy the property, more apt to build the multi-unit buildings, which provides less area and land for single-family homes, which is what the, the town. And we could build as many multi-unit buildings as you can fit in Plymouth, you still won't provide enough because they'll come from anywhere in the state, anywhere in New England if there's a subsidized home in Plymouth.
So I think that kind of speaks to another issue is the assumption that, and I'm not saying you're assuming anything, Mike, but the general assumption that larger units are all gonna be an affordable house, you know, affordable or subsidized in a way that's going to be a nonprofit that takes away from the tax base or is gonna be subsidized in a way that will detract from the tax base as well. I think that's a misconception, I think that can happen, but it doesn't always, and I know the, the housing folks that we've had here have been very clear that they pay taxes on the buildings that they construct that are, that are affordable, so.
Kind of interesting, and it goes back to one of Rebecca's questions earlier, like we, we have a sense and we had someone that came in and talked about, you know, that the housing needs in New Hampshire as a state. What does that mean, what is the housing need in Plymouth? And I don't think we've ever really gotten a good answer for that. You know, I came. You know, I came to Plymouth specifically for work. I think if there were, I mean, I'm curious if there was a hundred, whatever the definition of affordable housing units is in Plymouth right now, how many people would flood to those units? Like, I think of the jobs in Plymouth, for the most part, we've talked about the organizations that are the big employers, right? It's the college, it's the hospital. There aren't, this is my opinion. I don't see enough, you know, if there was a commercial place where there was industry to draw people here for work, I don't, I don't see a lot of jobs that are going to draw people to come live here and work here. That's, I don't look in the classifieds either, but I don't think there's a lot of that to draw people here. So, I am curious, like, if we had all of these units, how they would be filled and who would be coming to fill them? And I worry a little bit that, you know, we have, at one point, we had a lot of the landlords that rent out the college units in general, say that, you know, they're about seventy-five percent full. So, now, maybe they weren't, maybe they're ninety percent now, maybe they're ninety-five, I don't know. So, there seems like there's units available that people aren't filling. So, if you add more housing on top of that, what does that do?
Well, I think part of the challenge is if you're renting a property to college students, you're probably not renting it to a different market as well.
If I could also speak to, like, I've told this anecdote before, when I moved here. And I moved pretty close to downtown, and other faculty members at the university were warning me not to move where I moved. They were telling me, "Don't live there. It's going to be living hell, living next to the students," and all this other stuff. And so, a lot of people choose not to live in town who work in town because of a stigma that, at least like the residential areas have for the culture of partying and everything else having to do with the students. I mean, there are nights, it gets kind of crazy, but for the most part, it's actually kind of pleasant.
I had the same experience. We were backed up to Pleasant Street for a while when we rented, and like, I'd hear students partying during the day, but I kind of enjoyed it, like, they were having fun. During the day. They're playing ping pong outside. Like, who cares? I didn't mind.
The other thing I wanted to say about the, you know, the affordable housing in quotes, like subsidized housing and such, which we're not really talking about, is that there's also assumptions made often not very outright about the kind of culture of who would be moving in. And I probably don't need to say much more about that, but, yeah.
So, what are the jobs that are available? That's what I don't understand. Like, I don't think there's a lot of jobs available here to draw people here.
So, it's kind of a chicken or the egg thing, really. It's like, okay, if you have, don't have housing that folks can afford, does it make sense to increase, you know, to bring a business to town that has, that requires a lot of employees? And really, the type of jobs that we have in town and regionally are largely service industry jobs that, you know, maybe you're lucky if you make fifteen bucks an hour, but you're probably not making a living wage. So, trying to rent a, you know, one of the twenty-five percent open spaces in the downtown area for like thirty-six hundred bucks a semester for a room, you know, can't really swing that. So, you know, do we not have those businesses because we don't have the housing? Or do we not need the housing because we can't attract that type of business?
And what about like seasonal recreational workers as well? Who might want to, you know?
I don't know. I've just heard a lot in the last couple of days about the need for trades workers and how difficult it is to find people, plumbers, electricians, and whatever, so.
I'm not sure that's a housing issue either. I think the people who are licensed, like, I've been hearing for twenty years that like, oh, yeah, I was at the, I was getting, renewing my electrician's license, and the average age of the guys in the room was sixty.
Yeah.
Like, there just aren't people going into those trades.
Yeah, it's another issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it has an effect on
It does.
Real estate industry, there's no question.
So, just something I want to bring up, I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I'm going to bring it up anyway, is, you know, just thinking about, you know, what our zoning allows, and, you know, eight, you know, maximum, we don't allow like a maximum of eight or ten units in a multifamily residential, but thinking about preserving the character of the town, what we do allow in our ag zone is minimum lot sizes of one acre. So, which really is going to impact the character of the town? A ten-unit apartment building or a ten-unit development with, you know?
Ten-one-acre lots?
Yeah, with ten, four thousand or thirty-five hundred square foot houses on there. Or if they're, you know, that's still huge to me, but if they're like fifteen hundred square feet still, it's going to be more impactful to the environment, and I think would certainly change the character of the town as well if we had, if we saw that at scale, so.
Well, I certainly don't think you would allow larger multifamily structures anywhere in town. I assume you would zone for areas that it makes sense to do that, and you zone for areas that really are appropriate to preserve for single-family development. You know, I work in one community where there is a larger lot size than one acre. But if the developer will do a cluster type of subdivision, then the average square feet per lot drops. So, there's an incentive to do cluster housing and think about open space by design.
We do have cluster language in our ordinance.
What I'm thinking of is, you know, it's, what are you trying to accomplish in those areas where you want less density? Is it no development, or is it?
Mixed use, open space.
Or, yeah, or is it, is it open space by design? I mean, is it the ambiance of that part of town that people love? And you can accomplish that without necessarily changing the minimum lot area if you create an incentive to do open space by design, and perhaps think about design strategies like preserving the view from the road or something like that. I mean, one of the loveliest developments I have ever seen was a backlot development in a town in Massachusetts where you're driving along the road, and this lovely view of an old agricultural field is what you see between the birch trees. The houses that were built are toward the back of the property. So, the houses are there. There was actually a couple of extra homes allowed in that development to move the houses back. But to the neighborhood, the view that they cared about didn't change. So, I mean, there's a lot of design things you can do in zoning to preserve a landowner's rights, but at the same time, get a different type of design. What I was struck by today, frankly, I'll just level with all of you, driving around town, was the condition of the infrastructure here. And, you know, I have to bring that up because from a planning point of view, you got to really think about
Sidewalks, roads.
Yeah, and what is the what kind of additional burden are you putting on streets that you already can't maintain? I mean, something's not working with infrastructure maintenance here, and I don't know the town well enough, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I'm just saying, it's really obvious.
That was a big discussion in the CIP last year.
Yeah, I mean
They created a list of roads that, and then there was also a, so June has done a lot of work on that. There's a road surface management plan, which is supposed to help us stay on top of those things.
Yeah, pavement management plan is a good thing, but I mean, it's, some of these roads, it's really beyond getting a good pavement management system in place. It's rebuilding road beds. I mean, and I just worry for you as a town that's not big, you know, I have a ton of tax-paying units here, the infrastructure that you're trying to maintain is significant. So, that is not far afield from housing. It's very, very connected to it. I don't have a formed opinion other than I was quite surprised to see the infrastructure conditions in some of the, some parts of town.
Part of it, Neil will be able to speak about it, but part of it is, it's New Hampshire. We get the thawing, and then we get freezing.
Oh, yeah.
And the ruts, and you'll see very much opposition to paving a road, which some communities, Center Harbor, every single road is paved. In New Hampshire, Plymouth, a lot of people want the dirt roads.
Oh, yeah.
And then it makes it hard to maintain.
They're the better roads right now. In this town, they're the better roads in this town right now, the dirt roads.
Yeah, they're flat.
I have to share with you that twenty years ago, I finished a master plan process for the town of Hamilton, Massachusetts, which is a very beautiful town. And there was a dirt road in that town, connected Route 1A to another part of town where there's a private school and a lot of agricultural land. This is very beautiful. They were absolutely determined that that road was never going to be paved. So, the first thing I did when I went back to town, because they asked me to come back and update the plan, so we're working there now, first thing I did was go and see whatever happened with that road. It is still a dirt road, and the town spends a fortune to maintain it, but it's one not long road, and everything else is
It's probably their only dirt road, so they have a grader just for that one road.
They do. I mean, and they spent a fortune on this road, but it's a character thing, and they really love it. But it's not a whole lot of roads. It's one road, and they love that dirt road. I grew up in New Hampshire, so the dirt road culture here is near and dear to me. But nonetheless, I'm looking at the whole town and just trying to think about where development makes sense, why development isn't happening, kind of, what are you offering to the, lack of a better word, offering to the market of people who might build here? And I just, I do, I do have concerns about the physical capacity of the town.
We're fighting a tough battle with climate change and increased salt use, and just the amount that that is increasing the freeze-thaw cycle is certainly just making the problem worse.
Yeah. Yeah, and we see that elsewhere, too.
And there's just a lack of money to maintain the roads like they really should. And the highway department, Joe is, Vagnant, is doing a great job with the resources that he has. And that guy in his department, every storm, they're picking up the snow on Main Street just so we don't lose any parking spaces, and for the convenience of the shoppers and the storekeepers. The highway department is
They do a good job.
They're doing the best they can with very, very limited resources.
Yeah, and I say this not to be critical of anybody, it was just something that was kind of obvious to me driving around town that I was not expecting to see.
It's the worst time of year, too.
Sure.
It really is. Like, there've been more potholes that have opened up in the past two weeks than, than I've seen, you know.
Right, but this time of year is going to happen again, and it's going to happen again.
On the other hand, it was like
Since last February.
It was like Bartlett Road. It was like Bartlett Road before it got fixed, which was a major undertaking, a lot of money. And, I mean, that road probably, like, cost me thousands of dollars in my car.
There's some roads, even with four-wheel drive, you got to know what you're doing to get from one end of the road to the other.
I'm sure that's true.
Four-wheel drive, yeah.
And I was glad I was not doing this tour in my car because Neil, did you want to say something? You look like you've got time to speak.
Well, for many years, this town has, has been struggling with a high tax rate. And for whatever reason, we had a high tax rate, the administration was trying to keep the budgets down. And in the process of doing that, the roads were not getting the necessary maintenance that were required. And when the drainage systems failed, the roads failed.
That's correct.
And now, we have done an assessment of all our roads, and we're trying to prioritize reconstruction, which is very expensive.
It is. And you can see where drainage has failed, you know, in a number of places, so. I don't want to dwell on this. I'm just sharing with you, you know, first time I drove all around town, and I, that was, that's a memorable piece of the community for me, is just the condition of the infrastructure. And you have to think about that when you're thinking about growth policy, like, where does it make sense to direct development? Do you really want to direct it into parts of town where the infrastructure is so challenged?
Would that require extending the infrastructure?
Pardon me?
Would that require extending the infrastructure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then just thinking about subdivisions and private roads becoming town roads, and, you know, the added burden that
We're talking extensively lately.
Yeah, I'm speaking generally.
As long as new subdivisions meet the current road standard, like, the town should adopt as many of those as possible because they're the best roads in town. At least, if it's new, it's built to that standard. It's good. Like, it'll, that'll last for a lot longer than the ones that were cart paths that got paved without subgrade.
Is there anything you don't want to see? Out of this project study?
I'm open.
I don't want to see. I know the answer's yes, but I don't know where to begin.
I'm, for one, open to anything, as long as the discussion is there, the stakeholders are brought in, and we can find common ground. I'm open to anything, and that's the whole key, is the communication. And that's why I'm really excited about you being here and bringing the community together to talk about ideas and what we can do to move forward.
And ultimately, your board's going to have to make decisions, so we can have a whole lot of people show up at the, you know, public workshop, is it April sixth? Is that the date?
Actually, I was hoping we might be able to spend a little bit of time talking about our expectations as well.
Oh, absolutely. My point is just, when we go through all this, in the end, Judy, the consultant's going to come back and say, "These are things we've observed, these are things we suggest you consider, but you guys are going to have to make decisions." And that's why I'm just trying to get a little sense of like, what's off the table? And maybe nothing is, but I want to know.
I don't know. I personally want to see sprawling subdivisions, and sprawling series of cul-de-sacs, and me personally, I'd much rather see more tightly clustered development in targeted areas. Leave the ag zone the ag zone. Maybe there are certain sections that could be talked about where it wouldn't be anymore. But in general, keep as much development as close to, which gets back to the roads issues again, as well as like walkability and aging communities and all sorts of different people, to keep people close together. With through streets and all that sort of thing, yeah.
What I don't want to see is a town that only has high-end homes and only wealthy people. I want to see a town that has a cross-section of our society.
And you don't feel that you have that right now?
Well, we have a lot of friction with the students, you know, but, you know, college has been here a long time, and, you know, we appreciate the college's presence, but it's extremely difficult living next to the students that live off campus.
I did hear a little of that this afternoon from
One of the things I've seen get better since I've been here, I think, in some ways, that struck me when I first came here, speaking to students, including in the downtown area. I personally felt at least there was a kind of split between amenities really focused to very young people and students, and towards an aging population. And I felt the kind of middle didn't always have a place to go. And I think we've improved in that regard in some ways, but I think it's an easy kind of path to slide down with the college in town, with an aging population, and what happens to everybody in between. And I think that crowd is sometimes a difficult one to kind of lure and keep here, including like keeping students, like, do students want to stay here after they graduate?
Do they want to stay? Right after they graduate?
A lot do not.
Yeah, a lot do, though.
Oh, I'm sure.
Do.
Many friends that
Yeah, a lot of students like it here.
I mean, I've also talked to a lot of people, "I'm getting right out of here." I've also heard that, you know, for people. It's both. There is both. And I think we are doing a little bit better than when I first came here, but other businesses and
So, what is there to keep them here? I mean, if they want to stay, what is there to keep them here in terms of an employment base or whatever, or housing they can afford that's, you know, not thirty-five hundred a semester? I mean, what is there to keep them here?
Well, they may wind up living in Campton or Holderness or Rumney.
So, you're talking about keeping them in the region? If not right in Plymouth proper?
I mean, that's what they can afford.
Yeah.
I guess it depends on the type of job you're looking for. If you want to be in the service industry, the tourism industry, there's lots of those jobs, but if you're looking for a professional job, you know, you might just have to wait until you find one. That's what I had to do. I did whatever I could until the right job opened up, and I was successful there, but it wasn't a job that brought me here.
I see.
Mike, weren't you a business major?
Yes. Yes. Business in education.
Yeah, I was a biology major.
I, I came back because my family was from here, but I grew up in another community. But I think the strength of our school system, we have incredible teachers, we have a great school system. That's a huge strength for this town in addition to the, the shop owners.
Yep. Yeah, I heard a lot of that. A lot of very positive feelings about the schools here.
Incredible teachers. Incredible.
I think it's-
Yeah.
There's no statistics on it, but I think this community is a very educated community because of the college, because of the hospital, because of these jobs that bring people here.
Yep.
So I think it's a real strength. I agree. I think the school is excellent. I've been really impressed with the elementary school here in town. I think people appreciate that. So we have some really strong folks in the community.
I, I've heard that almost consistently for two days now. There's a lot of pride in the schools here, which is, to me, a fabulous strength to have as a town. For all the concerns people may have about too many families or kids, you know, overwhelming the schools, you, you would not want to be a town where families don't want to live.
The, the elementary school budget-
That is a very different problem.
The elementary school budget was up like thirteen or fifteen percent this year, which I, I was a little concerned about him on the school board. In our budget hearing on Monday, there were four questions and we were done in seven minutes.
Yeah.
One question. Everything passed unanimously.
How many people showed up?
Um, I don't know. Forty? Fifty? Maybe not that many. But it was like, you know, considering the, the increase, I was concerned, I was concerned there was going to be more pushback and everybody who was there was there to support it.
People like to rent in Plymouth to put their kids through the elementary school. I used to have to be one of the tuition chasers when I worked at the SAU office. And people would actually rent places and they'd be vacant the whole time.
Oh, interesting.
They'd live in Campton or they'd live in somewhere else, but they wanted their students to go to Plymouth Elementary. So they would just find something to rent so that they could show us a, so people want to be here to put them in the school system.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think tuition is just north of twenty. If they, like, if a Rumney student wants the tuition into Plymouth, it's like twenty thousand a year. So rent is probably cheaper.
Did you want to talk about the workshop in April?
I, I was, I was hoping-
We haven't designed it yet, so.
Okay. I, I mean, I was just kind of curious for the planning board and the HOP committee, the housing committee, what we can do to help, but also to learn more about the January, January, April 6th.
Why does that roll up?
Get off YouTube, John.
The April 6th meeting.
Pouring, pouring over the Tucker Carlson footage lately.
To see if there's anything we should know kind of going into that as helping to facilitate that meeting, which is about a month from now.
So we haven't really designed it yet. I mean, part of my mission here in coming here these three days was to, to learn about what's going on here.
Okay.
And so, you know, we'll meet as a staff next week and start to flesh out how to do this. But, I mean, some of the questions I've asked you tonight, I think we're going to want to ask the public. Outreach is important. I don't know what your outreach systems are here. I'm gathering that some things that other communities have, like email sign-up to get information, just doesn't exist here. My general experience with community engagement is if you're in a community where there's already active systems for getting information out, it's easier to activate the public than if you don't have those established systems. But I would just say, and don't laugh, but this is really my experience after all these years. You get, you get an email list, email networks, you reach out to people. You, you know, you see people at the store, you talk, you talk it up, but there's nothing as effective as picking up the phone. And I mean, picking up the phone, not sending an email. And inviting, inviting six people you like and six people you can't stand. Because you want that mix of people in the room. And the burden to make that happen is not one the consultants have because no one knows us, but it is definitely something you guys are going to want to think about. If you really want a mix of opinions, you have to ask for it. And I will be the first to admit that those outreach systems that exist in a lot of other communities certainly do help to get the word out, but there's nothing as effective as personal contact. People just appreciate being asked and they will show up. I think if it's helpful to you, you, you have a weekly paper here? Is it a weekly newspaper? What do you have?
The Plymouth Record Enterprise is weekly.
Okay. So if it would help, we could give you some language for a press release or two to get out about that. So I would just need to know what their publication drop dead date is for each week's edition.
Tuesday noon.
Tuesday noon. And it's good to send it to the Laconia Daily Sun, too.
Yeah, a lot of people read the-
A lot of people read that, yeah.
Okay. Do you have contacts at those newspapers so we could run for you on that?
Yep, we can get those to you.
Okay. I mean, we, we could do that and, and be able to give people a little bit of sense of what's going to be discussed, you know? What is affordability to people in, in Plymouth? I mean, I've heard everything from people like you can't find a place to rent to we don't want any more Section 8. You know, I mean, I've heard the whole thing. And, and a lot of misinformation, too. So we might just, without intending to cause controversy in the newspaper, let people know that those are the kinds of things that are going to be talked about. And to, you know, one of the things that we would probably want to know from folks who come to a meeting like that is, do you know people, you personally know people who have struggled to find housing in this community that they want to stay in? What was the housing search like? And, and see what people have to say. It would be probably good to take a look at some of the strategies that are discussed in the housing, the master plan for housing and get a sense of what people think about those. Since, you know, as a planner, right, I care about the town's master plan. So we would want to try to maybe reinforce or test some of the things that are in there. And probably do that through a combination of a little bit of large group discussion and then maybe breaking people into smaller discussion pods. So one thing I would be asking you guys is, what is your comfort level with maybe helping to facilitate some of those smaller discussion groups? I'm assuming we're going to have three people coming from my firm, but that's probably not going to be enough to distribute around. If, if the meeting is successful, you're going to have a lot of people there. So I would say be thinking about getting picked for-
Comfortable.
Great. Thank you, you know?
Or comfortably uncomfortable.
Yeah, so.
What is your definition?
Huh? Mine?
Yeah, yeah, curious to hear your definition of affordable housing.
So I try to stay with the technical definition because it's not loaded. The technical definition of affordable housing is housing that's, that people can afford, meaning not spending more than thirty percent of their monthly income on housing, whose income is, you know, kind of at or just sort of below between eighty and maybe a hundred percent of the median for your area. And it's never about the median income in your town. It's always about the area. So that, you know, what you're thinking about is people who may want to choose to live in the community who, who can't. You're a hub, so there are people who would probably want to live here for employment or whatever, or amenities or for whatever reason. So that's what the, a technical definition is. It's basically at or below kind of eighty percent of the median. For people who are really very poor, who have perhaps limited job skills or maybe have a disability, or maybe a single mom who can't work because she's got little kids, typically that income target would be much lower than that. The official definition for workforce housing is households that are between roughly sixty percent of the regional median on up to a hundred and twenty percent. That's the HUD definition of workforce housing. So we would kind of put some of these income limits out there for people to see. Sometimes what I do, and I think we probably will do for this meeting, is kind of go into your employment base here and pick out some jobs that tend to be plentiful, you know? And look at, well, what is the wage for those jobs? And what can those jobs afford? And how does that compare with what you actually have in your community now? So people can begin to connect, not only perhaps the recent college grad who has some skills, maybe entry-level interior designer or something, versus someone who's a landscape, you know, entry-level landscape worker, versus the person who serves you coffee in the morning at a coffee shop. That tends to give you a range of what kind of jobs are in the community and what sort of affordability levels those jobs need.
Can I throw some numbers at you?
Sure.
Grafton County HUD median family income is ninety thousand. So if you're looking at thirty percent of that, that's twenty-seven thousand a year-
Yeah, yeah.
-for housing. That's, and that's the, the, that's the midpoint. So we're looking at lower than that, too.
Right, exactly. So we'll pull those income limits and say-
That's the, I just wanted to get people to get a sense of scale for affordability for what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think, too, it's helpful to people to understand that household size is a factor in that. So we will sometimes just sort of control for that and say, single person who's looking for someplace to live. Somebody who's just finished school, high school or college, doesn't have a household and multiple incomes coming into it. What are the choices that person has available? So we'll probably look a little bit at that. Just for informational purposes for people, we'll probably bring some maps. Planners love maps. Planning boards love maps. At least find out where people live who come to the meeting. Be helpful to know.
That can be fun. Interactive. Have pushpins for people and say-
That's what we do. Yeah, that's, we just have little pins. You, you sign in and go up to the map and tell us where you live. And they, and I will tell you, I know from experience, somebody's got to be at that map because a lot of people are not comfortable reading maps. I'm just telling you the truth. Like, we love maps, but not everybody's comfortable with it. So, you know, you label all the streets, you label the water bodies, you do all that stuff, but you still sometimes have to help people and say, so what, what street do you live on? And one of you will pick on you and say, can you be up with that map and help people? Because they may not be able to find their way.
Or have somebody sitting there with a laptop and the town assessing center's square up there so you can click on it and make sure.
Yeah.
There was one thing that we did at one of these seminars. We walked in, they gave us a, was it one or two dots?
Yeah.
Two dots. And they had a, they had a board and there was a bunch of things listed on it. And you had to place the dot on the things that were most relevant to you.
Yes.
What concerns you, what didn't. And it was really interesting what people, the, the many, many dots that were after one thing. It was, it was just interesting. And I, I think that's a good-
It is.
-participation thing for the crowd.
Colored dots are fabulous. And, you know, we're in a world now where a lot of people have done colored dot meetings. And so sometimes when they come in and you hand them a strip of dots, they go, oh, my God, here we go again. But it is a very helpful, easy way to get a picture of the community. And sometimes we will also have a few demographic boards up, like, you know, what age range are you in? And, you know, we've just put some age cohorts up and just people can put a dot in there. And it helps us get a sense of, was this predominantly people who are older? Was it a mix? And how does that compare with what the Census Bureau says about, you know, discarding the college student population, what the makeup of your households is?
I think it's a way, too, these people step up to the plate and say what they, instead of speaking, because they don't want to speak in public.
Yeah. I mean, there are people who don't, but we want to hear from them. So, you know, sometimes we might even have a board where there'll be a question like, what did you want to say that you didn't feel comfortable saying? Or was there a question you wished we had asked that we didn't? And they can just write it on a post-it note and put it up on board.
Yeah.
Because not everybody is comfortable just going to a meeting and speaking, but they have something to say.
Yeah, they put brown paper on the tables with crayons.
Yes.
So as people were sitting there, they could just write something down. They could write it in front of that guy and go back to their seat and nobody ever knew where.
Right, right, exactly.
But you knew, but the questions, the concerns were on there.
That's correct. Right.
Oh, that was a really, that was another one, yeah.
And you could put an email address on it if you wanted them to answer your question.
Yeah.
It was really helpful.
So I think what we'll do, I want to talk to the folks in my office about this and just do a data dump after this incredibly intense three days. And maybe send Joseph and Joan a draft agenda to, for you guys to take a look at, or the housing group, you know, and all of you involved, and say, just give us some feedback. And we'll finalize that agenda based on that feedback. So it's, now people, we can say to people, this is what we're going to be doing at this meeting. And we can work with you on a press release.
Can I ask you one more question about your definition?
Of course you may.
So is that, you know, Phil said twenty-seven thousand. I break it down to months, that's twenty-two fifty. Would that just be rent and a mortgage payment? Or is that rent, mortgage payment, everything else that comes in with owning a house, like heating costs?
P I T I.
Yeah.
So if it's, again, the official definition.
Yeah.
If it's rent, it is rent and basic utilities.
Right.
Water, electric.
Sure.
You know, communications. If it's a, if it's homeownership, it's principal interest, taxes, and hazard insurance. It's the sum of those items.
Twenty-two fifty?
That's not a lot for a-
Huh? Twenty-two fifty?
I'm just telling you that's what the definition is.
No, 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 I'm, I'm-
You know, people need to know.
I mean, I don't know what rent is around here in a one or two unit. I'm-
Yeah.
Never been in the rental market here, but I would think twenty-two fifty. I don't know.
It's not a lot. I'm charging twelve hundred, going up to twelve hundred for a one-bedroom in a semi-house. And I can get more.
And I think the other thing that we don't have to get into tonight, but might be interesting to ask, if not part of the discussion, then just a checkmark or a colored dot or something is, you know, what's the community's sense about short-term rentals and are those an issue? You know, I mean-
Well, the short-term, and it should be said, the short-term rental rentals in terms of like renting to people passing through on vacation or whatever. And then there's like the nurses. And that's like a whole-
That's a different, if, that's a different market, yeah.
But that's also kind of like slightly longer short-term rental. That's a huge part of, and a growing part of our economy as well.
Right. I just wouldn't lump that in with the definition of short-term rental because short-term rental has a, it's all another one-
Oh, yeah, I know, I get it, yeah.
All right.
So to, to give you a, a lower bookend, eighty percent for, for a three-person family, I think eighty percent of the AMI was sixty-eight thousand. So-
That sounds about right.
It goes down a little bit more.
It sounds about right. You're making fifteen bucks an hour.
Yeah.
So if you're taking thirty percent of that, sixty-eight, and, you know, and that's the eighty to a hundred, and that, and that's, that's the definition for workforce, which is kind of mid-range income for the area. That's not low. That's mid.
Right. But I think it is important for people to understand, if you're in a community with a service economy, service industries, that low income is workers.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, but people do need to understand. People have a tendency that they throw out the term Section 8 and it's got all this stuff associated with it. And, I mean, sometimes I find in studies I work on that people are calling something Section 8 because they don't know what else to call it. And it's not, it's nothing to do with Section 8. So, you know, I don't know what the subsidized, I don't have that much information yet about subsidized housing in this community. I'm probably going to get that from NH.
Julie, I have a question. When you have to be at a certain amount of, the percentage for their income, does their disability payments, does their social security payments that they get, is that-
That's income.
That's income?
Yeah.
Okay. So that helps them meet their target?
Mm-hmm.
So?
Yeah.
Okay. That's interesting. Because I was trying to figure out how someone's income.
Yeah. Income is not necessarily all earned. It could be, you know, any number of sources. So that's a factor.
But, but keep in mind that, you know, eighty percent of, you know, three, for a three-family at sixty-eight thousand, that might be two earners.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. It could be. I don't have anything else for you.
I know.
You've had a long day.
I know. I can't believe a long day this has been.
It starts again tomorrow morning.
I know, I know. I don't even want to look at the schedule and see when we're supposed to start.
Well, thank you so much for joining us.
And, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. This is great. I really appreciate your taking an extra night just to talk to me. It was extremely helpful.
We look, we look forward to continuing the conversation.
Yeah, yeah, me too. All right.
So April 6th is the hearing?
April 6th is the public, the, the community meeting, yeah, at the elementary school.
Yep.
Is that confirmed at this point, Joseph? I know it's like kind of tentative. It's definitely confirmed?
It's confirmed. We have the paperwork in with the school.
That's good. That's super. Great. Thank you.
What time? Same time, six-thirty.
Same time as a regular meeting.
Same time as our normal meeting.
Same time as the normal meeting.
Same time as the normal meeting, correct.
Can I make a request? And I'm happy to do this if it lightens your load. I just have to set a reminder to get an email the day of...
At the elementary school.
Just reminding, I think we're all kind of...
They're all going to the one place.
I'm in the elementary school gym.
Kind of robots where I am. I showed up, yeah.
Ditto. I rely on that.
Lie on what?
I just think the change in venue or time or date.
He's telling us when we're supposed to be.
It's confusing for some of us.
I actually think that having an event, a Facebook event to share will get to a certain porpi, portion of the population as well. Even though calling is probably going to be more effective, I do think having an event that can be shared, like for families that are busy, a lot of people stay in touch that way. I don't think it would hurt.
We can talk to...
I mean, there, there may be other social media venues, avenues that might, I'm not all that familiar with other platforms, honestly.
I think there's also some other community groups, too, that, I think it's just...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good, appreciate it.
Have a great night and...
Thank you for everything. See whoever I'm going to see tomorrow.
Or I can tell them.
Are there any of those, I forgot, I forgot the name of it. There's, is that social media for neighborhoods?
Oh, like...
Next door?
Yeah. Are there, are there any, are there any, are there any of those in...
I'm not familiar with anybody who's using them.
I know Holderness uses it, but, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't...
I think somebody, I got a message, somebody was trying to start one of those in Plymouth and I was like, eh, I'm not doing that.
So, we're not done yet.
Yep. That was only item, item five.
I don't, I don't think our, rest of our business should be too long, hopefully.
Okay, great. I'll just tell her about the two thirty process.
Okay, thank you.
I have a list here, but I think they're all short items, I believe. Well, Joseph, are there any communications received?
None at this time, that I'm aware of.
Good answer.
Exactly. So, we are supposed to, this month, nominate someone for the LRPC, Little Lakes Region Planning Commission to serve alongside the, Bill Bolton, who is the select board representative there. So, the select board has requested, I think we talked about this already, that we have a planning board representative on the LRPC as well. And, so the process is that we make the nominations and then the select board approves them, although they've already approved Bill Bolton and Zach Terrell because of timeline issues that they were facing.
Was Zach nominated as an alternate or...
Zach is the alternate and Bill is the, yeah, primary commissioner.
Mike, do you have any interest? I think you'd do well there.
No. There's something else I'm involved, that I want to be involved with.
I'd be willing.
I'd nominate John.
John wins.
If you're willing.
Yeah, so, well...
I, I don't want to, I don't want to...
Further discussion.
Aye.
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 All right, then. So, what else do we have? I don't want to get into this really tonight, but just to put it on our heads up, we want to schedule a joint ZBA planning board meeting. Dave Kent suggested that and it's supposed, kind of unofficially supposed to be like a yearly thing that we do. And we weren't doing it for a while and then we did one again last year. And we're going to do one again this year, which would be the beginning of May, I believe it is. And we'll have to pick a date, either their meeting or our meeting, I suppose. And just to give everyone a heads up, try for a future meeting to, and we can probably send this out in the meeting notice, to kind of think up some things that we should talk about. Be ready to, to discuss that at whatever, our meetings. Because our last joint meeting last year, I think some interesting things were said, but it also kind of sprawled a bit and it was really kind of hard to rein in. And just to keep us focused on important things to talk about that are actually kind of actionable and not just kind of broad discussion while we're meeting together.
I have a recommendation.
You do, yes.
Can we invite the Conservation Commission as well?
That would be good.
I, I would think it might be a good format to get...
I'm not opposed to that.
More input on the same topic.
Broader input between like land use bodies in town.
Would, I mean, if we can keep it to a, you know, a limited agenda and talk about planning and zoning and...
So, oh yeah, I have some thoughts. I, I think inviting the Conservation Commission to a planning board meeting is a great idea. I kind of feel like the ZBA and the Conservation Commission are so vastly different that I just, I think there's, what we'd want from the ZBA is different than what we could get from the Conservation Commission. And I think it might be too broad of a...
Spectrum.
Yeah, I just feel like we want, I feel like it's more, it's almost more likely to, to be a, you know, the Wild West, a little bit.
I just want to be clear, as a matter of fact, that there, you know, there are other groups in town that, you know, it would be, the Conservation Commission is also a group of volunteers that have valuable input that should be considered in planning.
No, I think it's a great idea. I think, I think where, I think it went a little, it got a little wild last year is there was a lot of seemingly private citizen requests of the planning board from the zoning board. And I think if we bring two boards together that have very different purposes, then I think we're going to be getting a lot more of the, that type of thing.
Where the zoning and the planning were a little bit more closely linked at the hip through the zoning ordinance and...
They're boards.
And they're boards.
Conservation Commission is a board in the same way.
There was a commission.
I mean, what's, I mean, what's the difference between a board and a commission?
It's a commission.
They have to be appointed by the select board. They're an agent of the town, essentially.
I think, is it a regulatory agency versus, I don't know? Good question.
They have a... They're an advisory board, though. They, they don't really have any enforcement ability, enforcement authority.
What I envision is one more table here, zoning one side, planning on the other, and then whoever wants to sit out there, invite the commission. I, I don't think you should have them all together.
Be a lot of people.
I, I just think what's going to happen is we're going to get a lot of like, we need more daycare and we need more open space and we need this and we need this and we need this and things that, I think that if we're foc, if we have a, a purpose for the meeting, and to me, the meeting with the zoning board is a, an opportunity for them to tell us what's not working in their, doing their job.
And that could be one topic. I would also, it might be an interesting opportunity as well to actually talk about the elements of our regulations that deal with housing. We're actually talking about that this year in a focused way.
And I think that's, and that's great, yes, yes. Sorry. I just think, yeah, let's, let's invite the Conservation Commission, but I think the agenda needs to be a little different.
Okay.
Because I don't think the Conservation Commission is really going to want to weigh in on...
I think I'm on the same page as you on this.
Special exceptions and criteria. No, I, I think, but bringing them another time is, is great.
Yeah, separately.
So, also a reminder, so we are meeting next week again, back-to-back because of our shifting, yeah, of this meeting. And so, that meeting will be on the Thursday following town meeting, which also means we should be ready for electing our officers of this board at that meeting. And also just as a reminder, of course, we have zoning amendments up and town meeting Tuesday, elections, and then cast your ballot. And of course, come the next day as well for the more proper meeting, style meeting.
Just a quick thing on the schedule. So, if we've got our next work session on April sixth and we want to determine our agenda for the...
I know, this is why I had it on like the agenda tonight, but it's like, I don't want to like extend our meeting too late. I know, our, our next work session is the sixth. And then May would be the work session with, so it doesn't leave a whole lot of time to iron this out, which is why if we come to a meeting prepared to talk about this, hopefully we can get it kind of narrowed down fairly quickly, maybe even at a non-work session. Just take a few minutes at the end to kind of just put our thoughts together and hopefully quickly...
Do we have a lot on the agenda for tomorrow or next week? Yeah, okay.
We have a site plan application and a subdivision application.
And, and a continued hearing for the road.
Yep.
Major or minor subdivision?
Minor.
Or alternatively, you can just deputize me into rule by decree and I can make up the agenda.
Is April sixth meeting at the elementary school?
Well, to have one of them presented and then ask...
Well, yeah, I can, I can do that, actually.
Come up with some ideas, too.
They can broadcast from me.
You go in the back door.
I move that, in our first meeting of...
May?
May that John be the next chair.
Oh, no, that's April.
Oh, April.
All right. Other stuff, appointment renewals, are we, yeah?
I told Joseph I'd let him know.
You're out?
No, I, I, you know, just got a lot, so trying to figure it out.
Okay. Did you, did you figure out if you have to...
I, I need to, I will.
One more last question here, then.
One more last question.
Colombo, right? One more question. So, we had the lawyer, town lawyer, look at our site plan review regulations that we drafted and agreed upon. And there were a couple of minor amendments suggested that are mostly just kind of small, tiny, little like wording administrative sort of things. There was one slightly more substantial change, which has to do with letters of credit versus escrow or...
Versus escrow.
And that's really the extent of it.
I would say that's still administrative.
My question is...
We, we could be very general and say financial surety and let the mechanism be determined by the applicant.
What's your question?
I, I was, I was going, I was going to suggest that for next, for our next meeting, we distribute the changes so you can all see them and hopefully all agree that they're fine, that they're minor changes.
For the meeting next week?
Yes. At that meeting, if we all agree these are very minor changes, they don't need like a lot of discussion, schedule a public hearing, adopt the changes at a future date. And hopefully, none of this is very, very complicated. And it is another thing on the agenda, but it should be a small thing on the agenda to just say, yes, we agree with these changes, I hope, looking at them. Does that make sense to anyone? If the changes are tracked...
Did we ask the lawyer what he thought, if we needed to go to open it up for a public hearing for the, the changes?
I believe they would.
Okay.
If we have, if we have a site plan pending, let's do it after the site plan application, just so that there's no question in the order, in the agenda order.
Has it already, but you just need a twenty-four hour notice?
I think if we accept it and approve it, even if it hasn't gone to hearing, it's in effect.
So, would you all like to receive this for next week? So, we just take a quick look at it and hopefully kind of push the process forward?
Only if the notice is...
Well, we wouldn't actually have the, the public hearing next week. We just look at it, agree to have a public hearing, and then have the public hearing at the next meeting or something, adopt them and, yeah. Unless anybody objects to it, of course, after seeing them, but, you know, I don't think there's too much there.
I do think there's a logistical challenge that if we have the, if we move it to hearing before we have a site plan application, technically that application is not going to be in compliance with the regulations that we just adopted and moved forward. Because you actually have to treat them like they're in effect as soon as you vote to move them to hearing.
But the changes are so insubstantial that it's not going to be like...
I don't think it's going to be a problem.
Okay, all right, then.
It's not going to trigger a different application or a different checklist or any of that stuff, so, any requirements.
Minor changes.
Yeah.
Then they're good.
If you disagree next week after seeing them, though, then...
I would just hate for somebody to bring us an application and say...
All right, that, that's all that I have. Are there any, any, any other issues from the board here? Are there public comments?